This is a meeting of the Cohasset Select Board. It is February 5th, 7 o'clock. I'm going to do a call to order. Mr. Plex?
Ms. Plex here.
Mr. Brady?
Mr. Brady present.
Mr. Cretin?
Mr. Cretin present.
LMR present.
All right, I would invite, Jean Haley-Dippel present. I would invite all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, so this meeting is being recorded. It is being livestreamed right now. Is that right? We're all good to go? Okay. On Facebook and Zoom. To the extent we're entertaining comments, we will do so on Zoom, but we're not going to be checking other social media platforms. So sign into Zoom if you want to make any comments. The first agenda item is Executive Session Exemption 3. This is to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation of the public body in the chair, so declares. Here, the board will discuss the pending Oyster litigation as well as the NEB versus Town of Cohasset litigation in the chair, so declares. I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session under that exemption.
Make that motion.
Second.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Plex?
Ms. Plex aye.
Mr. Brady?
Mr. Brady aye.
Mr. Cretin?
Mr. Cretin aye.
Mr. Lamar aye.
Jean Haley-Dippel aye. All right, we will return once we are done.
All right, so we're back, everyone? Okay. Back from executive session. It's a little bit late. So, right now, we are at the Town Hall Select Board Goal. The board has a few things that we are considering under this topic, including the RFP for Temporary Space. So this is, again, for temporary space. We're not considering anything relating to permanent space or location, as the agenda states. We are discussing the temporary status, including fire safety and ARPAFONS, and public engagement with respect to the long-term Town Hall solutions, i.e. permanent ones. So, let's start with maybe the update on fire safety. So we got in our packet a letter from the chief, Chief Dockery. We did ask him to weigh in on fire safety issues, on whether the interim measures were appropriate, his thoughts. And what he said was, this is a February 1st letter. He says, "After reviewing Mr. Hallen's letter dated January 26, 2024, I am in complete agreement with all the recommendations to bring the building up-to-date per the Mass State Building Code, Section 10, 106.5, certificate of inspection. I also agree with Mr. Hallen that the unsprinkled part of the building must remain unoccupied until it follows the applicable building and fire codes. Due to the lack of a sprinkler system and along with the failure of rated fire assemblies between the Old Town Hall and the annex, the township posts a fire watch in the Old Town Hall whenever the building is occupied. A fire watch in any individual whose sole duty is to patrol all highways, communal areas, and storage areas of the building, looking for any signs of a fire within the building, this individual should have a cell phone with them to call 911 at once, and then alert all occupants to exit the building if they detect any signs of a fire within the building." So that is the update with respect to Mr. Dockery. Chief Dockery. Mr. Senior, do you have an update on the ARPAFONS?
So, we clearly have $35,000. The $35,000 that the board authorizes is fine. So, we've been scrubbing for the remainder. There's for sure $33,000 or $32,000 that's undesignedated, I guess is the best way to say it. And there's another, as much as $186,000 that we're in the process of scrubbing through the claims to see. I mean, that includes some money installed on the library roof and all. We have to make sure that all the bills are paid, so we're still going through those. Some of those, I think some of the very small numbers we're sure are there. Some of these others, we have to take a little more of a deeper look. So, there's definitely an additional 32 with this, say up to 186. It's kind of coming less than that, but there's, I think there's a fair amount of... There's going to be at least another 33, which will get us to 65, which would be enough for the additional Town Hall analysis or other expenses. We're looking at this literally day by day, so by next week, I think we're just going to be able to clear a number.
Okay. Does the board have any questions about the ARPAFONS or the letter from Chief Dockery? Okay, or comments?
We do have one quote so far, with the cost of less than $30,000 for the work, so that's good. So, we'll wait for it tomorrow.
Now, let's turn to the RFPs for Temporary Space. Mr. Longley, is there something you would like to say about the ARPAFONS?
Something I'd like to say about the Town Hall being declared unsafe and the decision... Hold on a second, sir. Why don't you go to the podium? Is there a microphone there? Just so people can hear you at home, because we got feedback that people are having trouble hearing people from the table. Yep. You can have three minutes, please. Oh, yeah. Thank you, Rob. Thank you.
So, this is not related to the temporary RFP, the temporary space RFPs, but Mr. Longley, I know you feel it's relevant, so please... And please confine your comments to three minutes.
Pete Longley, Rustic Drive. I just want to call to your attention some text that's in the original letter by Mr. Hallen. I printed up copies, and I highlighted some section that's worth taking a good look at. In particular, in the second paragraph, before I mention that, I want to say that my perception here is that what we have is a game of telephone. Where we have, Town Hall's been declared to be unsafe, and no one has questioned Mr. Hallen except for me and Clark. We're both licensed architects. And because of that, there's a lot of planning that's going into trying to fix a problem that is not a problem. So, the specific item behind Town Hall being declared unsafe is highlighted there. "There is insufficient separation between the original Town Hall and the addition, which resulted in the failure to meet the height and area expectations." He goes on to clarify in the last sentence, the same paragraph, "That the issue of separation between the main structure and additions is a code issue, not a maintenance issue." In other words, it's not a question of blocked fire exits or broken fire alarm systems or other life safety systems within the Town Hall that obviously have been maintained well. He says it's not a maintenance issue. It is entirely an issue of his interpretation of the height and area analysis. Now, I have here, as part of the height and area analysis that Mr. Hallen did not include in his report, was not included in the report that was prepared by C-3 Code Consultants. And that is...
You have a minute, just a time check.
That is that when you calculate the allowable size of a building, that you take into account something referred to as excess street frontage analysis. This is not anywhere in the C-3 report. I give you a complete copy of it. All three of them. There's no mention of it in Mr. Hallen's letter. So I will read to you what it says in the code. There's a little paragraph there, "Street frontage increase." When a building or street has 25% of the building's room and fronting on a street or other unoccupied space not less than 30 feet in width accessible from a street by a postive fire lane not less than 18 feet in width, the tabular areas may be...
All right, so we're back, everyone, okay. Back from executive session, it's a little bit late. So, right now, we are at the Town Hall Select Board Goal. The board has a few things that we are considering under this topic, including the RFP for temporary space. So this is, again, for temporary space. We're not considering anything relating to permanent space or location, as the agenda states. We are discussing the temporary status, including fire safety and ARPAFONS, and public engagement with respect to the long-term Town Hall solutions, i.e. permanent ones. So, let's start with maybe the update on fire safety. So we got in our packet a letter from the chief, Chief Dockery. We did ask him to weigh in on fire safety issues, on whether the interim measures were appropriate, his thoughts, and what he said was, this is a February 1st letter. He says, "After reviewing Mr. Hallen's letter dated January 26, 2024, I am in complete agreement with all the recommendations to bring the building up to date per the Mass State Building Code, Section 10, 106.5 Certificate of Inspection. I also agree with Mr. Hallen that the unsprinkled part of the building must remain unoccupied until it follows the applicable building and fire codes. Due to the lack of a sprinkler system and along with the failure of rated fire assemblies between the Old Town Hall and the annex, the township posts a fire watch in the Old Town Hall whenever the building is occupied. A fire watch in any individual whose sole duty is to patrol all highways, all hallways, communal areas, and storage areas of the building, looking for any signs of a fire within the building. This individual shall have a, should have a cell phone with them to call 911 at once and then alert all occupants to exit the building if they detect any signs of a fire within the building." So that is the update with respect to Mr. Dockery, Chief Dockery. Mr. Senior, do you have an update on the ARPAFONS?
So, we clearly have $35,000. The $35,000 the board authorizes is fine. So, we've been scrubbing the remainder. There's for sure $33,000 or $32,000 that's undesignedated, I guess the best way to say it. And there's another, as much as $186,000 that we're in the process of scrubbing through the claims to see. I mean, that includes some money installed on the library roof and all. We have to make sure that all the bills are paid, so we're still going through those. Some of those, I think some of the very small numbers we're sure are there. Some of these others, we have to take a little more of a deeper look. So, there's definitely an additional 32 with us. Say up to 186, it's kind of coming less than that, but there's, I think there's a fair amount of, there's going to be at least another 33, which will get us to 65, which would be enough for the additional, you know, Town Hall analysis or other expenses. We're going to, we're looking at this literally day by day. So, by next week, I think we're just going to be able to clear a number.
Okay. Does the board have any questions about the ARPAFONS or the letter from Chief Dockery? Okay, or comments?
We do have one quote so far, with the cost of less than $30,000 for the work. So, that's good. So, we'll wait for it tomorrow.
Now, let's turn to the RFPs for temporary space. Mr. Longley, is there something you would like to say about the ARPAFONS?
Something I'd like to say about the Town Hall being declared unsafe and the decision that the...
Hold on a second, sir. Why don't you go to the podium? Is there a microphone there? Just so people can hear you at home, because we got feedback that people are having trouble hearing people from the table.
Thank you.
Yep, you can have three minutes, please. Oh, yeah, thank you, Rob, thank you. So, this is not related to the temporary RFP, the temporary space RFPs, but Mr. Longley, I know you feel it's relevant, so please, and please confine your comments to three minutes.
Pete Longley, Rustic Drive. I just want to call to your attention the, some text that's in the original letter by Mr. Hallen. I printed up copies, and I highlighted some section that's worth taking a good look at. In particular, in the second paragraph. Before I mention that, I want to say that my perception here is that what we have is a game of telephone. Where we have, Town Hall's been declared to be unsafe, and no one has questioned Mr. Hallen except for me and Clark. We're both licensed architects. And because of that, there's a lot of planning that's going into trying to fix a problem that is not a problem. So, the specific item behind Town Hall being declared unsafe is highlighted there. "There is insufficient separation between the original Town Hall and the addition, which resulted in the failure to meet the height and area expectations." He goes on to clarify in the last sentence, the same paragraph, "That the issue of separation between the main structure and additions is a code issue, not a maintenance issue." In other words, it's not a question of blocked fire exits or broken fire alarm systems or other life safety systems within the Town Hall that obviously have been maintained well. He says it's not a maintenance issue. It is entirely an issue of his interpretation of the height and area analysis. Now, I have here a part of the height and area analysis that Mr. Hallen did not include in his report, was not included in the report that was prepared by C3 Code Consultants. And that is...
You have a minute, just a time check.
That is that when you calculate the allowable size of a building, that you take into account something referred to as excess street frontage analysis. This is not anywhere in the C3 report. I give you a complete copy of it. All three of their systems, I'll mention it back, says street frontage analysis. Neither is there any mention of it in Mr. Hallen's letter. So I will read to you what it says in the code. There's a little paragraph there, "Street frontage increase. When a building or street has 25% of the building perimeter fronting on a street or other unoccupied space not less than 30 feet in width, accessible from a street by a posted fire lane not less than 18 feet in width, the tabular areas may be increased 2% for each 1% of such as excess frontage." So, the code report have been strictly looking at the base amount. There's been talk about sprinklers. Sprinklers cover that base amount. A street frontage increase can provide as much as 150% additional area, so that the tabular amount can be increased. I've included a little calculation there according to the street frontage analysis. I've shown on the plan, the plan of the existing Town Hall, the perimeter of measurements of the existing Town Hall formed by Clark Brewer are 463 linear feet. The yellow highlighted walls are the walls that are considered open. In other words, it's open to a space that's at least 30 feet in width and accessible from a posted fire lane. When you do that analysis...
Mr. Longley, if you could wrap up your comments, please.
When you do that analysis, there's 62% open frontage minus the 25%. You're allowed to increase the frontage by 74%. If you go to the next page of that handout that I just gave you, it tells you that you can build that is 8,874 square feet without a firewall and without sprinklers. And the existing ground floor of Town Hall is 7,175 feet. So there is no firewall that is required. And Mr. Hallen and Doug Anderson, his co-consultant, failed completely to include this part of their analysis. And had they included that analysis, they would have seen that the existing Town Hall is smaller than the amount that you're allowed to have for type 4 wooden construction, which is what the Town Hall is. So, here it is, we're talking about spending money to build a firewall, which, by the way, has to be constructed in accordance with Section 706 of the Building Code. It requires that the firewall extend from the foundation through the roof to a height of 30 inches above the roof. It has to extend through the front of the building, a distance of 18 inches. So there's a fin sticking out of the front of the building. And you can't have any openings in it, except for maybe one door per floor, limited in size. So here it is, we're chopping up a very small building into smaller buildings, and it has to be done with, it has to be able to stand should either side collapse in the event of a fire, which means you're going to be interrupting the structure to install this firewall, this firewall that we don't need. So, I'm recommending that before we spend this money, that we hire another consultant, get an additional opinion about the original Town Hall, which Mr. Hallen is saying that the original architect didn't know what he was doing, and the original building official didn't know what he was doing. And I think that we need to spend some time, slow things down, be sure about what it is we're doing before we spend a bunch of money on things that we don't need to do.
Mr. Longley, if you can stay there. If the board has questions, you have any questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple. Mr. Longley, on December 12th, you stated you're an, you have an office in Boston, right?
Yes.
Are you a licensed architect in Massachusetts? And you're allowed to practice as an architect in Massachusetts?
I am allowed to practice in Massachusetts, absolutely.
Okay, I was just wondering, because I was just looking you up. I didn't see you, so. And, but you did, you're a licensed architect in Palmolive?
No, I'm not. I'm licensed in four states, but not in the state of Massachusetts.
Oh, you just said you were.
I don't, I don't sign and seal, so in my company, other people sign and seal. I review the documents. I'm in charge of the QA QC program.
What's QAC, I'm sorry?
Quality Assurance, Quality Control.
But you don't practice as an architect in Massachusetts? You just do the background work?
Well, I...
To simplify it.
I provide administrative support for all of our...
So you do the background work?
I don't sign and seal documents. I have not signed and sealed documents for 30 years.
But you're talking about frontage and everything like that. I'm just kind of curious what your interest is, because you're up here.
Yeah.
You've been talking frontage and everything that, for layman, it doesn't mean a thing, I'll be honest with you.
Well, I worked on two projects in the 1980s under this edition of the code.
So you did the edition? You did the edition, you had a handy edition over?
No, under this edition of the code, the fourth edition of 780 CMR.
Well, you've been...
I worked on two buildings in Massachusetts and performed the code analysis for both of those buildings.
Very good, but I'm interested enough, thinking of yourself as an architect in Massachusetts. You're not liked.
I am. I'm allowed to call myself an architect because I am registered. I took the same...
All right, I'm just trying to clear up any representations that were put out there.
I took the same NCARP test that's offered in Massachusetts, only I took it while I was in New Jersey.
No, I just want to clear up any, that's why I was a little confused myself, so. And I just want to clear up any representations that have been posted to the public, that you were an architect licensed to practice in Massachusetts. That's all.
Does any of the other board members? I'm sorry, Mr. Grady?
No, 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 I pretty much wrapped it up.
Is there anything else that the board would like to ask about?
I just, you know, in all due respect to my fellow psycho member, Paul Grady. The, you are licensed to practice in four states, and I don't think there's any question that you're qualified and knowledgeable about architects. So I just don't think that we, as a board, want to, you know, kind of go ad hominem. But I've found that your work, I'm not sure if I completely agree with it and might be interested in further analysis, but I have found that some of your analysis is, to a layman like myself, has some construction which is somewhat compelling. So I do look at it, you know, some degree of respect. I don't discharge it out of hand. And thank you for being here.
Thank you, Jay.
Well, I guess one question I have is, we're not a Board of Appeals. The Select Board is not a Board of Appeals. There is a way to appeal a decision to the district court?
This decision.
To the district court?
That's the other mistake that's in Mr. Hallen's letter. He says at the bottom, it's supposed to be a form letter.
Mr. Longley, I'm not talking about the BBRS. I'm talking about a district court within Massachusetts. Right?
You can certainly appeal the matter to a district court.
Have you chosen to do so?
You're asking me if I want to pay out of my own personal funds for an attorney?
Would you like the Select Board to do so? Out of taxpayer money?
I think for a nominal fee to an additional consultant, you can rest assured that the Town Hall did comply 37 years ago. You've got an architect, who by the way, by the way, architects are liable for the design. Building officials are not. They're protected, they're indemnified under the code. You've got Brett Donham, you've got his letter stating in no uncertain terms that he designed a building that complied with code.
He said he imagined it would. He didn't say it actually did, which, as in a court...
He said there would be no reason to design a building not to code. That's a direct code quote.
Yeah, he's not saying that he in fact did or could remember. I read what you sent us, and so I just want the record to be exactly clear that he speculates as to what he did. I don't think, and fairness to him, it was in 1987. It was a very long time ago. But my bigger question is, are you suggesting we should not renovate Town Hall?
No, I'm suggesting, well, first of all, anybody that's had code training knows that the code is the minimum standard. You can always do more. All I'm saying is that we don't need to tear the building apart to build a firewall that is not necessary. We don't need to hire a fire watch. When, when, actually, if you did further analysis through apportionment, you'd see that you're allowed to build a building that has 16,000 square feet on the ground floor without a firewall. I just, I just, you know, took it to the first score in overtime in my analysis, that the game is over, the building can buy.
So, I think at this point, it strikes me, unless Mr. Plexey has something he wants to...
Just a brief comment. So it's clear that there's some difference of opinion on the issue. And I would just like to make it clear that for me personally, and I assume for the rest of the board, on this issue, to go against the building inspector, to go against the fire chief, that's a very high bar to clear, and I don't think we've cleared it.
Well, Mr. Hallen called in a consultant to confirm his approach. That consultant did not perform a complete analysis. See, I can look through the three pages, there's no excess...
Hallen and the fire chief would disagree. And I have to side with Mr. Hallen on that.
So, Mr. Longley, if you wouldn't mind sitting down. I don't want us to go in circles and keep relitigating this issue. The board has a lot of people waiting that also have comments. So if you wouldn't mind, please.
Thank you.
All right, let's continue forward on the RFPs.
We have one question.
What's the question? Is it on point?
From Nicole and Patrick Mueller, Wendy Hill Road. The question is, I'm in support of Mr. Longley's comment, and he opens up the important question and reasonable request to have a separate and independent review of the findings from the inspector. If the true interest is saving taxpayer money to be finding a solution, then why would this board not consider the request in findings from Mr. Longley, that there may not be an issue to begin?
Okay, thank you for the comment. We have hired, the town did hire a code inspection expert, a third party, and Mr. Longley also disagrees with the third-party code inspection, the code expert, from what I understand. So, we are continuing to go in circles. So, I do want us to focus on the agenda item, which is, unless someone else wants to say something about the code that is different than what Mr. Longley just said.
Just briefly, Clark Brewer.
Mr. Brewer, you have three minutes. I am going to hold you to this. Yes.
My interest is in protecting the town's interest. As a registered architect in Massachusetts, we all take the exam in the states that we start out in. And Pete's NCARP has an NCARP certificate. He can exist in Massachusetts at any time, but he works for a big firm. So, that happens, he's licensed architect. But in terms of, there seems to be some confusion about the firewall, and I don't know what's being planned for separation. And what often gets confused in the firewall is there's fire separations which exist between different occupancies, like the assembly occupancy, the auditorium, and the office space. And in fact, on the second floor of the new section, call it the new section and the historic section, that's just business occupancy. There's no requirement for a separation there. What the confusion is in John Halen's letter, and I think with the code consultant, is they're saying that there's a firewall, and that's based on one of the three options for mixed use. But the reality is, is three options. One is a firewall, and there's two others. I did send a letter this morning to the board, and I really think that before you start doing construction, trying to build a firewall, which would be virtually impossible to do if you're creating fire separations, you could do that with rated partitions. But you want to have a licensed design professional to do that work. In fact, I referenced the International Building Code's existing building code, the I E B C. Basically, it says, the building inspector, if he thinks there's a problem with an existing building, you have to hire a licensed design professional, which could be an engineer or a registered architect, to do an evaluation to see whether it's level one, level two, level three alteration, to get into the details of what really has to be done to do it right. And there are some, there's a number of things in John Halen's letter that I'd say can be called into question. The biggest one is, to me, the A3. The code consultant says it's an A1 assembly.
So one minute...
I don't know, the other firm said A3. This makes a difference for the size analysis that Pete gave. Now, architects, we get the big picture, but we live and die professionally on the details, where we have to work out the details. And I just recommend that Michelle and Chris, hire a licensed professional before you do the fire rated partition or doors to do the analysis to prove that you don't have to build a firewall, because building a firewall would be virtually impossible in that building.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brewer. Does anyone have any questions or follow-up from that?
I've got a question. Sorry.
Yes, please.
Mr. Brewer?
What's that?
You're on the planning board, correct?
Planning board, yes, sir.
And you're also...
I've been for 15 years.
I know, the zoning bylaw committee?
Zoning bylaws, yes.
And there was a meeting tonight.
Except for the building codes.
Thank you.
There is, I told the chairman I would...
That's not the question I'm asking. I'm asking you if you're a member of the zoning bylaw committee. That's all I ask.
Oh, yes.
All right, it was a meeting tonight, the meeting tonight, right?
I beg your pardon?
Wasn't there a meeting tonight?
You just asked that, I said yes. I told the chairman that I would not be attending, as well as all the other members. Jack got a copy of that.
All right, let's...
Jack's on the committee too. What is your point?
All right, thank you, Mr. Brewer. Okay, let's not devolve, please. Let's refocus on the RFP and the lease. So where we are is that the, let's just step back. I do think it's helpful for the residents who are listening to understand the chronology of how we got here. So, let's roll the tape back, quite literally. So I went back through the past Select Board meetings, including the November 28th meeting and the December 12th meeting. And on November 12th, excuse me, November 28th, we had a Select Board meeting. At the meeting, we discussed what to do about Town Hall. This was following the vote that we previously had. At that point, we discussed trying to get together a real repair plan to understand what we had to do. At that meeting, we discussed, for example, code compliance. Thank, thank you. Thanks, Clark.
At that meeting, we did discuss code compliance. We discussed that if we began doing fire suppression, which was one of the key starting places from the 2018 Life Safety Report, we got from an engineer, including, like the sort of engineer that Mr. Brewer was just suggesting we get. So we already had that engineering study done, and the engineer, among other life safety repairs, recommended that we do fire suppression. And we discussed at that meeting that if we started to do fire suppression, we would trigger, given the cost of that, under applicable Massachusetts code, we would start to trigger other repairs, like electric upgrades and other downstream upgrades that would start to be pretty expensive. So, we discussed with town staff and directed them to figure out what repairs were needed, the full list, like let's unpeel the onion and figure out what we need to do in order to get a quote "real number", because that was floating around a lot during the prior election, cycle of the November election. What's the real number for repairs to Town Hall? And what are our options there? Mr. Dick made comments, Michael Dick, at that meeting, and urged us to do that. We agreed. This, for example, is at 2:45 on the November 28th meeting for the Select Board. And so that's where we left it. And that's what our town staff did at the direction of the Select Board to start to figure out what do we actually have to do, including on the code front? Because we also knew from the 2018 Engineers' Report that the engineer indicated that his pricing did not account for code compliance. So we needed to figure out more what we need to do. On December 12th, we got a report in terms of what we needed to do. And you'll see this at 1:30. This is when the building inspector and the fire chief and the code expert and the head of facilities walked through the building to make these determinations, starting with fire suppression. And that led to Mr. Hallen's letter on December 15th, based on the information from that walkthrough and all of the research that was done in terms of what needs to be done to make improvements, including as to the code issues. We talked about, though, continuing to do the repair list to unpeel the onion. That's at 1:40 on the December 12th meeting. And so I just, I'm going through this excruciating detail to remind us that we started at trying to figure out, what are we going to do about Town Hall? What are the repairs that are realistically needed? We discussed needing to relocate staff to even begin to do those repairs if we were going to stay in the existing building, because they were going to be substantial repairs. A lot of this back and forth about code, it may be an interesting discussion, but it doesn't change the fact that we still need to do the repairs, including to our life safety systems, whether it's fire suppression, electrical... electrical, et cetera. And so, then we put out the RFPs in late December to canvas, where is space for relocating staff? We had talked about also doing public engagement and a survey that was important to us. We directed our communications specialist, Mr. Schrader, to begin that process. Unfortunately, he has left for a new job, so that sort of hindered that, but we want to, I would suggest, get back on track. So, I'm providing this background for folks that are watching from home, like, wondering, like, what the heck is happening here? What is happening here is we're trying to figure out how to responsibly address the Town Hall building, which, no matter what solution you think is required, I think it is fair to say, from the board's perspective, we will still need to figure out temporary space for our employees, whether we renovate the existing Town Hall, whether we tear down the annex and, you know, do a building, for example, in the back. All of that is going to require us having a real plan, a real construction plan, to do the repairs that are needed. So, with that background, is there anyone else that would like to provide some background as well to supplement? You want me to go through this?
Sure. So, I went back even a little bit further than Jean did, and I went back to all the Town Hall building committees that we've had. So, in 2008 was the first study. There was a plan for $5 million renovation of 41 Highland Ave, based on present-day values, based on inflation. That would be $7.6 million today. The analysis showed there were structural concerns, water infiltration, power distribution, end-of-life, historic building, fire alarm systems at end-of-life. This was 13 years ago. Second floor restrooms, historic building, not ADA compliant. That did not go to Town Meeting floor, but all Town Meeting did was allocate $300,000 for exterior restoration of the historic building. Then we go to 2014, and the feasibility study was done, and a plan came up at $11.8 million, present value $15.2 million. This was also not put forth to Town Meeting. The existing conditions of 41 Highland Avenue were designated as fair. The second-floor historic building does not meet building code. The stairways, the hallways, egress were all non-compliant. Historical building systems were antiquated. There was no fire suppression. And the conclusion of the 2014 study was replacing the annex was less expensive than repairing the annex. 2018, there was another Town Hall building committee, and they came up with a $12.5 million proposal, again, $15.2 million in today's value, based on inflation. The second-floor mezzanine and the basement not ADA compliant, HVAC, electrical, plumbing, fire suppression, end-of-life. It passed at Town Meeting, annual Town Meeting, by 75%, and it failed at the ballot by 30 votes. And in 2023, as the chair indicated, we had another proposal at annual Town Meeting for about $22 million, maybe I'm off a million or so. That was defeated at Town Meeting floor. And then the proposal at special Town Meeting for $10 million to purchase One Pleasant Street passed, and was defeated at the ballot by 10 votes. And the reason for my iteration of this is, this is not news. Okay, the current conditions is not news. Okay, it's been 2008, and I think it's coming to the forefront, from my perspective, because we don't have a pathway forward. And every other time, there was a pathway. There was another study. There was another building committee, Town Hall Building Committee. There was another commitment to feasibility studies, and, you know, $67,000 here, a million there, 500 there, to do the studies. And it never passed. And we're at an inflection point right now, where we have to make decisions. And it goes back well beyond last November. And if we don't do something, we're no better than everybody else who did nothing. And that's my opinion.
Thank you. Welcome to the exciting world of Cohasset Select Board. This is what we do, so we encourage everybody in town to run for the board. Jean, thank you, Ellen. Jean, that was a pretty good analysis of why we are where we are. I personally believe that the architect, Pete Longley, has put some persuasive things that at least need to be considered. However, I think what we've learned is, it's really kind of moot. We really are in a situation where the town has to take action. There's no way around it. And we can argue about various ways at which we're going to do it, but it can't be ignored. The information that has been painfully put together by our fellow citizens over a period of 15 years has been very clear that this needs to be done. Now, yes, we can argue about some things here and there, but part of the thing that when we sit on the select board, it's called governing. Governing is looking at things and making decisions, evaluation, weighing pros and cons, and coming to a decision that you know, when you do it, a substantial number of people are going to be less than happy. But that's what we signed up for, and that's what we're trying to do. And I think, in my personal opinion, and I have some opinion on some experience in dealing with older properties and constructions and developments and all that, that there comes a time when you just have to do it. And there will be no perfect solution, but we do also have a responsibility to protect this town from liability. And the Town Hall, as it presently is, is a liability. It is a Bernie's ring. And it's our responsibility, as this board, to protect the town, and also to provide the town with a proper place to administer our town government. And so, that's why, despite many, many misgivings and some great response to the citizens who are here, that I think we do have to move forward, and we have to consider this. Thank you.
Just one qualifier. I'm an attorney, and this is not my dream. Just adding that in for the record. So, where we are right now is, we have two proposals in response to the RFP that we put out for temporary space. And what I would also say, just as a caveat, too, is that I did ask our lawyers if it would be appropriate to do some sort of survey or something like that relating to temporary space options. And the short answer is no, in light of the RFP and the bid process that is out there, with respect to the temporary space options. And so, I think the board should consider that before we do any RFPs for any permanent long-term options, that, you know, we probably don't want to be moving forward with an RFP too quickly. We want to have an interim time period for public engagement on that. So, I did want to put that caveat out there. So, now looking at the RFPs themselves, we have two options. We have One Pleasant Street, and then we have the second-floor above Feng Shui, the Stasko proposal. So, One Pleasant Street, just to reiterate, here, we are looking at renting $7,444 square feet. This is in the village. Looking at the rent per square foot, it's being offered at $22, escalating to $26 at the end of five years. So, that's the first one. And I would note that that one has an option to purchase the first floor within the first year at $3.2 million. Is that correct, Michelle? I believe so. Or purchase the entire building during the entirety of the lease for $9.1, sorry, $9.1. And then we look at the second option that Mr. Stasko put forward for the Feng Shui second floor. And there, we're looking at a tenant area of $6,350. There, the rent per square foot is $30, but that also includes utilities. And so, that price is, and it's escalating over time to $3184 at the end, at the fifth year. So, there, we're looking at approximately $848,000 in rent. So, we're looking at two properties that are about the same in terms of cost. One is bigger. So, One Pleasant has 7,544 square feet. The parking that Mr. Stasko is offering, there are more parking spaces, albeit they're sort of wedged off to the side where the Christmas tree farm usually is put up in that area. The, well, before I go into my sort of list, does anyone have any initial impressions on one proposal versus the other? Again, keeping in mind the merits of each proposal.
I kind of do the pros and cons. Is that all right?
Okay.
Do you want to go?
No, no, please.
Okay. So, I don't want to repeat what you said, but, so, for One Pleasant Street, in addition to the square feet and, you know, the average monthly rental over five years, it's new construction will be ready soon. It's a village location. It's easily accessible to citizens as the space is on the first floor. And as the chair mentioned, there's an option to purchase. To me, the cons were, presently as configured, there's only 14 parking spaces. Whether or not he converts to condominiums is uncertain at this point, which impacts the ability to purchase the first floor only. And there's no solution for the town vault, and there's lack of control of the second and third floor tenants with our, because we would not be the landlord if we were just leasing the first floor space. The 380 CJC Highway, the pros were its ready office space. There's plenty of parking. And again, the monthly rental is very commensurate with that of One Pleasant Street. Cons, for me, were second floor. And as I understood the floor plan, there were two exterior access points, and due to the space, it's not contiguous. Is that correct? Okay, so if you're in space A, and you need to get to space B, it's a down and out and up again. It's smaller than what we need. Again, no solution for the town vault, no option to purchase, and it's a non-village location. So, that's how I evaluated the two places.
No, go ahead. My question was answered.
That's hard to follow, actually, pretty much. So, I had very little to say. I think part of the thing is, one thing that we did loud and clear from our constituents in the last discussion is the importance of having Town Hall in the center of the village. And One Pleasant Street is in the center of the village. We have a vested interest. We will, at some point, be continuing in the historic Town Hall in some iteration. Will be continued. There's a, we all want that. And I think I formally can speak for the rest of the board. So, One Pleasant Street, I think, is better. It's larger. So, I would certainly favor One Pleasant.
I just echo my fellow board members. Both properties seem to have merit, but One Pleasant seems to be the better fit, especially in light of the feedback we've been receiving in terms of accessibility. So, that's where I lean at this point in discussion.
And I would say I lean in the same direction, to see that too, what happened in the last special election, that many people didn't favor One Pleasant. And the fact that it's in the village, either it's accessible, can walk. That's not saying anything bad about the Stasko property. I just think it's implication.
Are there any comments online about the RFPs? Okay. Are there members of the audience that would like to weigh in? Mr. Domitzer?
I think this is a proponent of one of the, I think, he might be the first, obviously.
Okay. Mr. Stasko, is that permissible under the bid requirement under the bid loss? Mr. Stasko?
Good evening. Ryan Stasko, 488 Drusel Road. The first, I guess, I do have a question, though, because now, are we, you know, from what I've been listening to tonight and everything, you know, we're really talking about the old Town Hall and the office space above the old Town Hall, where that's our biggest problem. And so, are we basically moving everybody out of the Town Hall? Is the whole Town Hall condemned?
We issued a temporary, a space, an RFP for temporary space to move all employees out, including to do necessary renovations.
Okay. So, you know, just clarification. With regards to 380 CJCH right there, you know, majority of the space is actually over Santander Bank, around 5,250 square feet is there. And then a smaller portion is over the Feng Shui, around 1,100 square feet. So, majority and everything would be over there. The biggest thing, you know, I mean, again, I don't like spending money. I don't, you know, I mean, I'd rather have everybody stay in the Town Hall than the options that we're discussing tonight, you know, and come up with a solution. But, you know, if we're talking about temporary, you know, one thing with 380 CJCH is that it is move-in-ready. And also, you know, like, for an example, if we were just talking about over, you know, basically, the office space with, like, the four offices over, you know, the old Town Hall right there, Town Engineer, Sewer, and Assessor's Office, and Finance. You know, that right there, you know, is around four offices, you know. Potentially, you could talk about, you know, the 380 building. We have basically four offices. It's around a 27 by 47, you know, square footprint right there, around 1,269 square feet, that would be around $3,300 a month. You know, just take care of those employees that are over, you know, the old Town Hall, not talking about the annex or anything else, you know. And the lease could be month-to-month. So, you know, I'm not looking for year, five-year, or whatever, right there. I think the big thing is, if we can make the, you know, fixes that we need to fix and get people back into Town Hall until we figure out what we want to do, that makes more sense than moving into One Pleasant, where we're committed for five years and spending, you know, basically a lot of money. So...
And your proposal's a five-year lease, too, right?
It is a five-year lease, but, you know, we also, again, too, it seems like the biggest problem was over the old Town Hall, not the annex, since the annex was sprinkler. And it seemed like it was the office space above the old Town Hall that was the biggest issue. And so, if you're talking about just a small portion right there, really, you know, those four offices, you could easily move those four offices, clear out the old Town Hall, do the work you need to do, and then move right back in until you figure out a solution of what you want to do, you know, with the Town Hall, instead of basically committing yourselves to five years or purchasing One Pleasant, which, to me, just doesn't make sense, because it doesn't have enough space, and you don't have the vault, you know. And so, you know, I think a lot of residents, you know, I mean, I've grown up in this town. I love this town. So, there's some, I'm still, you know, here. And grow at the Town Hall and Cohasset on the common. And to be down in One Pleasant and then have the vault and potentially bust a police station, you know, I mean, like, you know, you're going all over the place. And I think, you know, there's other options out there. I'm not saying, you know, any of our, you know, my options, you know, that there's other options, but I just think we should look at all of them before making a decision on One Pleasant, where we're committing ourselves.
So, not to ask you a tricky question, but One Pleasant is 7,500 square feet. CJC is about 6,300. So, if you think One Pleasant is too small, is your option a 380 CJC even smaller than small?
It is smaller, absolutely. But, again, too, it's only supposed to be temporary, you know. And so, even if you, you know, because I know we're not talking about, you know, if we were talking about the other proposals that we put in front of you right there, I mean, one of the things is, if we can basically fix up the old Town Hall, you know, or basically, the issue with fire suppression and everything above the old Town Hall, to make it basically a temporary Band-Aid, until we figure out what we're doing. If we're taking down the annex and just restoring the old Town Hall, you know, if potentially, you know, building the Town Hall behind, if we're going somewhere else, you're doing One Pleasant. But I mean, there's other options than basically just going right into One Pleasant and committing yourselves for five years.
And your proposal, the building behind in Brewster Woods, Brewer Woods, is, it's contingent on tearing down the annex, correct?
That, well...
That's the plan?
Well, it's not, it's not part of the, you know, the bid that we put in right there. I mean, that would be the responsibility of the town for taking down the annex and restoring it right there. But, you know, if the annex came down, you know, it's another option.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stasko. Oh, sorry, sorry, Ralph. Ralph, please. And then listen again. And then, Ms. McGinn.
I like the comfort of the podium. I guess the way I look at this whole question is whether or not one will perceive, and you know what I'm going to say, that moving to One Pleasant Street is a workaround, even though you're saying it's temporary, is a workaround to a ballot vote. Half of the town voted against. So I would raise the question with you. All of these votes on Town Hall, going back at least three iterations that I can name, have failed. At Town Meeting, if not at Town Meeting, at the ballot. I assume that you'll have to go to at least Town Meeting on whatever you do. And you may have to go to a ballot vote, but I don't know. I suspect that the 50% of the people who voted against One Pleasant Street, at a minimum, will vote it against again. I don't think anybody wants another failure, either at Town Meeting or at the ballot. I don't think usually you want it. You don't want that legacy. I don't want it. Nobody wants. What they want is a robust discussion in a forum where a number of people can raise questions and be answered, and you can raise questions and be answered. And nothing you should do today should preclude that. Or if in fact you do preclude that robust discussion because you have actually moved people to One Pleasant Street, people will perceive that as a deception, a deceptive thing to be done. And whether you like my thinking on that or not, I believe I'm accurate. And I think that is extremely unhealthy for this town and for everybody. I'm sorry to say that. That's what I feel. So I'm asking you, asking you, because you can, to delay any decision. You do not have, not have to make a decision tonight, as I understand it. I could be wrong. And I know you have limited options available to you. But you do have the option of either postponing it indefinitely, just delaying it, or taking no action whatsoever if you choose to. So that's what I have to say.
In your opinion, would it be perceived differently if we moved temporary space at 3A CJC?
Yes.
Why?
There is no chance that the town, which wants to have its seat of government on 3A, that I can imagine. That is not likely. We've talked about that. We've effectively rejected that in various ballot votes.
If I could just challenge you on that, though, so you're saying because it's a worse location, it would be better perceived?
No, it's because, in fact, it is not suitable for the long term, not the short. We're talking long term, short term. It's not suitable for the long term. It is not. You know it. I know it. Everybody knows it. They want to have at least something nearby, for heaven's sakes, not out there. And that's been discussed. We, we've been through this in all the town building projects so far. When we've actually done surveys and have heard questions.
And the last comment I'll make is that, I, I hope it's loud and clear that we're thinking of this as a temporary solution, whether it's CJC or it's One Pleasant or something else, because there is a need for a temporary solution at this point. So I, I understand what you're saying about the potential optics of a move to One Pleasant. Uh, but there is a need for a temporary solution at this point.
If you're going to move 27 people in all the files for an operating, effective town government, it's not temporary. It is not. You will find yourself saying, why in heaven's name would I now move back if I have a perfectly effective space at One Pleasant Street, even if half the population doesn't want it? Of course, that's the way people will think.
Doesn't that, doesn't?
It's not even, it's not even particularly, you know, perceptive on my part. It's just obvious.
Well, doesn't that, doesn't that ring true for CJC as well? We move 27 people. We move all the paperwork, the files.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I think the optics are relatively the same.
Absolutely. I totally agree. So I question the whole premise, the whole premise. And I don't want to go through the premise. You've heard it from both Peter Longley and also from Clark Brewer. The premise is wrong. That's what's wrong. The premise is, this building, which I was in for, what, 20 years myself, a long, long time, nobody at all time, anytime during the time I was there or the time you've been there, until recently, have said until December 15th that that building was unsafe. Nobody.
I would beg you to differ on that, Ralph, but I also say, I mean, the optics, same the other night, you said it yourself, that One Pleasant is a storefront sitting by the railroad tracks that is beneath the dignity of the residents of this town.
Exactly what I've said. You're repeating my words. I understand.
Gravitum, which I find a little disappointing, especially the people that live in those areas that raise their families on the hillside, but your opinion's yours. You know, so I find that, you know, it's just a lost footage.
May I make a distinction, please? I see the dignity of the, of the seat of government important. I see it as, as essential. The people see that the management, the seat of, the dignity of our, of our public servants be in a place we respect and want them to be in. And I mean it.
Yet we've allowed them to work in a building that's deteriorated over 40 years and falling down around itself. So forgive me for being a little.
I don't want to revisit those questions.
Feeling, feeling, that's just genuine.
So, Mr. Domitzer, I guess before we move to Ms. McGinn, I go back to, for a permanent solution, how much would you be willing to pay to keep our municipal services on the common, including, including the cost of the restoration of the old historic Town Hall and Auditorium? We know that's at least 6 million. And so then we'll have to add on the municipal services. I'm, I'm curious, because of all these votes that Ms. Maher listed, I'm not sure if you voted yes for any of them.
Let me make a couple of comments. I wrote very extensively about that question when, in fact, the vote came up at Town Meeting. And I fully supported actually something for the town offices. I did. So I was prepared to spend something if the, the solution was correct. And I still would.
How much?
How much? It looks to me as though between the two realistic options, and I'd have to say I probably would, I'm not going to say which I would choose. I said you really have two realistic options. One is to completely renovate the historic building and the annex. 15.8 million subtract about four, maybe you could get from CPC. So you probably get 13.8, call it 12 million, okay? If in fact you were choosing the Stasko proposal, which is what, 13.8 million? I think right now you would have a pure 13.8 million. You would still have to tear down the annex for what, 5.8, was it something like that? Plus 4, 4 million off of that, which gets down to about one, one and a half, one, around 2 billion out of pocket for that purpose. But you get a completely new building for 13.8.
And you have to restore Old Town Hall still.
Well, that's what I'm seeing the 4 millions for. That is, the 5.8, I believe, and Michelle will have to correct me. I think the 5.8 included.
It did. It did. So you're saying 5.8 plus the 13.8, which.
Minus the 4.
Well, that's still taxpayer money. So the total cost, to be transparent, would be 13.8 plus 5.8, which would be 19.6 million all in for.
Minus the CPC.
Minus whatever CPC decides they want to give for the historic renovation. So we're looking at either 16 or 19.6 to pay to keep our municipal services on the common. And it sounds like, from your perspective, that's the price you're willing to pay. The question is whether other residents are willing to pay that premium to keep the municipal services on the common. And.
That, that really is the question.
That really is.
That question does not go away because you moved people to One Pleasant Street. You just add the One Pleasant Street cost to it. Remember, you still have this outstanding question. You're just adding to the cost by putting people in, at One Pleasant, putting them in there and taking them back out. There's no escaping this. So I'm just saying postpone these things until you have this robust discussion.
No one's making any decisions on permanent solutions. I just wanted to suss out the realistic on the common options and prices, because I do think that's important for everyone to understand what the true cost of keeping. And even that is, we're talking about it today. Who knows by the time we actually get to the vote in the ballot? I apologize, Ms. McGinn. You've been waiting patiently. Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
One more question.
Sorry.
I was asking both the chair and Mr. Doran.
Yeah, sir. Sir.
On the 13.8, did we factor in if it comes into play prevailing wage?
Yes. Well, I think you should really ask Mr. Stasko, not me, but I understand that the answer is yes.
Yes. Take some prevailing wage. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. McGinn?
Can I say it here?
Sure.
I'll be brief. The, in my opinion, the, there's no particular reason to have town offices operate looking out on the common. The common's special. The sacred ground that sits beneath the today's Town Hall will still be there. We should have voted to buy One Pleasant Street. We should now continue to use it and take it over at the end of the lease.
Are there other comments from the audience, as long as Ms. McGinn is? Yes. Oh, sure.
In your opinion, as someone who lives here, if we could provide some historic restoration of old Town Hall, not as office space, and find a permanent solution for town government as a package deal for something in the range of $10 million, do you think that's something that would get broad support?
Yes. I do. 104 down the street, by the way. Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other? Oh, yes, sorry.
Well, obviously, if anybody out there has something to say, we defer to you. Everybody all set? The reality is that we've been through so many iterations. And if we were, we had a wonderful proposal, and I know some of the people who worked on that are here tonight, to do everything in the Town Hall. And it came in at 21 million. It probably would end up 24, resoundingly defeated. And there was a lot of work. And it was an excellent, well-thought-out, well-engineered proposal. The history of this town is we are 8,000 people. We would love to have wonderful things. And because some of the people in this town are very, very wealth, wealthy, we think we have to have a wonderfully wealthy Town Hall. The fact of the matter is that taxpayers and the citizens have repeatedly said no. I would love, Ralph, to be, have a wonderful thing on the common. But I can assure you that there are people who will resolutely vote against anything. And there will always be a reason why we can't do it. So what we as a select board have got to do is, as I mentioned earlier, is we govern. We have to make the hard decisions. And, and Gene did a very good job about the chronology. I don't agree with Gene on everything, but that was a wonderful understanding of how we got where we are. And what really happened is things happened and suddenly we were faced with a situation where the town has repeatedly made a very clear statement that they are unwilling to pay the price for a gold-plated whatever, or even a wonderful thing. The reality is, it will not pass. So now we have to make, we have to live within our means. And this is what we as a select board are working very hard to do. And by the way, notice that everybody's here. Not everybody, but we have had open meetings. We have made people have the opportunity to speak, even if we may or may not agree with them. And we, there is an open commitment to listening to the people. So we're trying to do that, but it is what it is. We can only spend what the citizens are willing to spend, and that's what we're doing.
Excuse me, sorry.
Any other comments? Anything on Zoom?
Mr. McGoldrick on Zoom would like to ask a question.
Sure.
Mr. McGoldrick here on.
Good evening, Madam Chair. George McGoldrick, 107 Border Street.
Okay, you have the floor or the video.
You know, historically, this has been an interesting dilemma. Having been in real estate development for a long time, it's not easy to make a decision about what to do when you're moving people on buildings. I just think it's an unintended consequence that the people that have voted no for the past four times now want it back on the Town Common. And I think that ship has sailed. I think this board has come up with a pretty ingenious solution to solving this problem at a very reasonable price. And I don't think that moving to One Pleasant Street so, doesn't, it does solve the answer, because you have to look at, the Town Hall still needs to be redone. So even if you move four offices now, you're still going to have to move everybody else in six months or a year. So it makes sense to put that deal under agreement today, because at $3.8 million plus 5-plus million to renovate, you've now solved the problem for under $10 million that the town's been grappling with since 2008. So I strongly recommend that the town move forward with a One Pleasant Street solution, because while you're not on the Town Common, you're 200 feet away. And you can leave the mailbox at the Town Hall. If people really want to pay their taxes on Town Common, just leave the mailbox there. But move forward with One Pleasant Street solution, because it's a great economical solution. It'll save the town money for schools and everything else that we have to do going forward. And the fact that the Town Hall's not on, on the common anymore is unfortunately something that we had to bite at the apple for four times. And people with misinformation, we've lost it by 20 votes, 30 votes, 40 votes. I think the right solution is to move forward with One Pleasant Street. And that will really, in the long run, people will look back and say, that's a great solution that this board put together. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McGoldrick. We didn't realize that cutting the Gordian knot would only require footing the mailbox in front of Town Hall and keeping it there. So, pretty ingenious. Anyone else?
One more related point. You know, I, I, I think that the, the temporary space that CJC offers allows you to swing in and out depending on moving apart departments. It might make sense if the renovation of our existing Town Hall is the, and the answer. But the reality is, we've got three times the space in our existing Town Hall than what's being offered at One Pleasant Street. And I just, you know, if it's cheaper, yes, but it's not a third of the cost of either renovating or replacing or rebuilding. It's not, it's not a third. So I think you really have to take into account what, how much square footage you're getting per dollar in your analysis and represent that fully.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. So one of the things that I, I strongly consider when I look at the options, and Mr. McGoldrick really went straight to it, is the option. The option to purchase the first floor, which to me is very, very enticing. That's $3.2 million. Given the town's financial situation, we could probably save up for it using free cash to defray a substantial portion. And then, assuming that it's allowed to convert into condos. Yeah, there's some downsides, but we shouldn't let the perfect be the enemy of the good, which is seemingly what we've been doing for many years. And so to me, with respect to these RFPs, we're not only landing temporary space, but we're preserving an option that, once you remove statistical discrepancies, half the town already voted for, but we're getting it for a third of the price, i.e. $3.2 million. And so if we can take care of our municipal services in a safe place without this huge enormous cloud of liability hovering over us, that's, that's, that's valuable to me. I understand the nostalgia of having government services on our. Um, I understand the nostalgia of having government services on our village common. I really get it. I understand it. I work for the government. I work in a building that's a block from the White House. And so it's really nice to have the center of government in the nicest place in your country or your town. I totally appreciate that, and I know that this might be a bitter pill to swallow for people that feel very strongly about that. At the same time, I think what we can do, and I think what the select board will start to discuss, and I'm not going to speak for everyone, but I feel pretty comfortable saying, the select board is very committed to not only restoring the existing auditorium, but working to make it a better opportunity in quality of life for the people within Cohasset. Right now, it's not really serving as a good quality of life for the people of Cohasset. We don't have programming in there. We don't have the craft fairs and the puppet shows that one generation used to enjoy, but now we don't. Um, and so I do think that One Pleasant Street affords us the opportunity actually to do that historic renovation and tear down the annex and bring back that building at a much lower cost than any cost we've been looking at to date, that 5.6 million, which is probably gonna be a little more, um, and really restore it. And I think it also enables us to have a conversation with nonprofits and residents across Cohasset that may actually have a shot at helping us restore it as well. And there's already some residents that I think are, um, you know, starting to do some grassroots advocacy and discussions among themselves about what that would look like. And I think that, um, that could be a substantial, um, opportunity for the town and its residents to sort of take back control of town hall and the programming and really the center of what it used to be for the town. The town, I think the town, no offense, Chris, did not enjoy that town hall so much because the town manager was there. I think the town really enjoyed it because it used to have programming, it used to have drama, it used to have craft fairs, it used to have all these things that I'm surprised to hear about because I've never enjoyed that since I've lived in Cohasset. It's always been this dormant entity. And so I do think we can bring it back to life in a way that ultimately you will be proud of, Mr. Dormentzer, even if, um, the town manager and the assessor's office are somewhere else.
I'd like to kind of piggyback on the chair's statement. I mean, for a long time, 41 Highland Avenue has been a very divisive building. And it's taken people, like, friends, separated, um, different opinions, all valued. You know, just personally, I envision it as a place that could bring the town together in a restored sense with that stage, with your plays, arts, festivals, an open door, movie nights, just things that want to draw people back to the common, not that people aren't going there already. But it seems for a long time, and it's gone through, as Mr. McGoldrick stated, three to four iterations, and each one has been bombed for one reason or another, which to me is divisive. So it may be an opportunity for the town to come together and look at 41 Highland Avenue as an asset, which it actually is, and as a place that people can truly and finally enjoy and to go in. I have this stupid idea that place lit up for Halloween, for Pete's sakes. And, but just something that people will use, have fun, go to, again, at movie night, plays, shows, arts. And, um, hopefully, again, there's some disagreement tonight that at the end of the day, we do all come together and find the best path forward for that building because it is an asset. And at least this board, I think I'm speaking for all of us, we intend that it stays.
So you want to haunt it house with fire suppression?
I want to haunt it house with fire suppression.
Just kidding. Um, okay, so now to try to move towards a decision. So we have One Pleasant, we have CJC. Um, some of the board members have already indicated that One Pleasant is the way they want to go. Um, for me, I really like the option to purchase at a price that will arguably most likely not require a tax increase in order to safely house our municipal services as we work together on the historic portion of town hall. Um, so that, that's a huge selling point for me. And I think on the money, it's almost equal, but you get more space at One Pleasant. Um, you know, yes, there's extra space within town hall right now, Mr. Brewer's point, but a lot of that is dead space, it's hallway space. It's an auditorium that otherwise houses this meeting that is right now at the senior center. So we have a workaround that we have been doing for the last few years, and we know how to accomplish that. Um, but it does have a conference room. Um, the one thing that I'm, I'm not as jazzed about are the parking spaces. I know we do have that extra, um, extra adjacent lot that the MBTA owns that's used for public parking, which is where a lot of people will probably end up parking. But I do think of, um, the board, we're inclined to go in the direction of One Pleasant. We want to really push on seeing if we can, um, do some additional parking or at least something that can make an easier sort of accessible walkway in between the two, um, to figure that out a little more for our citizens. I don't know if, um, other board members are ready to vote or have things that they want to also consider along the road of, if, for example, we vote for One Pleasant in terms of the temporary space RFP.
I, I guess the, uh, I don't really need this, but, uh, I guess for the people at home, they may find this, um, easier to hear. Uh, my only question would be, how do we, consistent with the bidding rules, put an answer to One Pleasant Street and get more parking? How do we do that? And do we have, and Michelle, maybe you can best, do we have an idea of the ideal number of spaces that we want to include with this?
So, um, so the initial proposal, when the town was looking to purchase the building, was the town was going to get 30 additional parking. So I think that is still what everyone's looking for. Everyone's still looking for those 30 additional parking spots. Um, we can engage with the owner of One Pleasant, um, provide a plan, and ask that he accommodate those spaces.
I would support that.
Okay, would, um, are there any other, um, questions that we have in terms of logistics or technical aspects? Um, in terms of the appropriate form of a vote with respect to responding to the RFP, um, should the vote be subject, Christine, you're looking at you, for the appropriations question?
Well, it, it, it kind of has to be for at least five years. You can't, we don't have the money to do that.
Yep.
Uh, I, I think there's, we could find sufficient funds to get through June 30th. And then as part of the budgeting process for the fire prior to future years, we can have that included in the budget, budgeting process now for consideration.
Okay, so the motion would be that we would vote to accept the RFP noting that we could do the funds prior to June 2024, but following that, that rental time period, it would need to be contingent to a vote at town meeting.
Pretty much any agreement with any third party has to be contingent on town meeting, uh, you know, action for funding. Because town meeting can always not fund something.
Yep.
Uh, except for one, you can't not fund lots.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I anticipated, I just wanted to share.
And, and this, you know, there are some other expenses, you know, potentially involved or some moving expenses, things we have to also calculate, so.
Okay. Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
Pending, I would like to make a motion to approve the temporary rule to One Pleasant Street. Pending, Chris, can you, want me to read through that one again so I say it clear?
Uh, pending, uh, discussions with the owner regarding parking.
Pending discussions with the owner pending, uh,
And, um, and,
Appropriation of funds.
An appropriation of funds at town meeting.
And appropriation of funds at town meeting for, for the out use.
For the out use. Motion, yeah. The motion's made. It's incorrect, is it?
All right.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Um, do we want to have discussion with the owner about the parking before we do the answer to the RFP? Um, we do have a motion and a second.
So I think it's part of your approval would be that they would have to accommodate the additions.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Um, do roll call vote, Mr. Plex?
Chris Plex, aye.
Mr. Grady?
Paul Grady, aye.
Mr. Creighton?
Yeah, Creighton, aye.
Ms. Mar?
Ellen Mar, aye.
Jean Haley, diplo, aye. Okay, um, let's move to the, Michelle, if you could help us think through logistics in terms of the owner's response and what, you know, we need to do there. Let's talk about the long-term options now and what we might be looking at in terms of public engagement on that because that is equally important. Um, so with respect to the long-term options, we have talked about, um, putting out, for example, a survey, doing a public forum. We have talked about doing that once we have our communication specialist onboarded. Is she the end of February or?
Yeah, I, I, there's, I'm right attached to these interviews today with the final, with two of the finalists, so I think we're close.
Okay, 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 she or he for that matter. Um, okay. How does the board feel? Uh, I know we're anxious to get going on public engagement because we have a pretty short window, um, for, you know, beginning to make decisions. Um,
How do we feel?
Yeah, do we want to wait for the communication specialist or do we want to move forward with?
I'd say we move forward. Just, you know, whatever thought we come up with and.
Certainly we can begin planning, but it sounds like our communication specialist is close. So planning, brainstorming, but before we start executing any plans, I would suggest our communication specialist be on board before we start publishing surveys, planning public forums.
Okay.
They're gonna hit the ground running.
We, we could come back next week with a schedule like we did for a special town meeting with the communication partner, plug in the people and resources as they become.
And I think we also want to give some guidance on what the options are as well. I think that we want to put out any options that are real options, including, um, the renovation at the 16.8 million, I believe is the price for that. Um, I think the board will have to think about how we want to phrase the options and which options we want to present. I realize Mr. Stasko has a, um, proposal out there that, um, is, is hovering. And, um, I don't know if folks want to discuss that, or we can put it on a subsequent agenda if we want to continue having discussion on that.
I think, um, it's very important that we have a series of public meetings and kind of wide-ranging. Anybody can come in if it, Mr. Stasko has a thing you want to present or other people or other options. We've, tonight, we've solved our temporary problem, at, at least we hope so. But I do think that we should err on making sure people have the information they needed and being able to come up and address their fellow citizens in a select board moderated forum.
Okay, um, so it sounds like we have some work to do on public engagement and the options, um, that are out there. And I do think before we put options out there, they should have some level of vetting because I don't think we want to put options out there that are just, uh, not legal. And on that point, I would say to Mr. Stasko that if you want to propose to the town that we lease a building, um, it has to be built on your land, not ours. And you'll need to comply with appropriate zoning laws as well. Um, because the plan that you showed us has a corner of your building built onto town land that you proposed to lease to us. So I would provide you with that feedback, um, that.
Did they all give you an updated, uh, letter that we sent or no?
Um, I do not have an updated letter, and I don't want to open up a whole new thing, but.
Does some revision except for made in preparation for tonight, medical, getting the building off of town property?
Okay, I think that's a good start, um, because that's facially illegal. Um, so I think, I think that we can begin to vet some of these options, um, and go from there, including having real prices. As you can see, we've been trying to get real prices for a lot of these options before we're willing to put them forward to the town, including in a survey. And so we've reached out to the Attorney General on your building, Mr. Stasko. If you have information you want to provide to us as to prevailing wage, we will take that into account too in terms of what the price should be. So, and, and I, we'll put this on for another agenda item. Uh, I'm not going to put you on the spot publicly, but we're trying to land the plain non-provening wage and what the cost is.
I understand, and that was in the letter to you.
Yep, okay, great. Um, so we'll look forward to that in a future meeting as we get our communication specialist onboarded. We'll wait for follow-up from the owner of One Pleasant to see what movement we can have on the parking spaces. Um, and I would say for those citizens that are out there that are looking at, um, creative solutions with respect to town hall and a restoration, I think that you're hearing the board is willing to, um, certainly entertain proposals, um, of people who are willing to come together and try to, you know, help bring back, bring back town hall. Yeah, yeah, because we do realize that it's important to them. All right, anything further, Mr. Plex? I look to you because you always look like you're in the process of saying something. I don't want to, um, miss anything. Um, okay, so we're done with this. I guess we have to continue to sort of be in the holding pattern on public engagement until we get our specialist onboarded. Now we're moving to the presidential primary.
You've already voted?
Oh, wait a minute, wait, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Host, please, sorry.
Thank you, Brian Host, 20, 29th Drive. Um, and I am one member of the capital budget committee, which is not meant to discuss this, so just one member. And I have a request, a question, and a suggestion. Uh, the request is, now that you've made a decision, can we please bring this in front of capital budget as soon as possible? And I'd let you know we're meeting next Monday. Happy to put you on the agenda with this temporary, um, solution. Um, the question I have is with regards to the one-year purchase option. I, I just, you know, recognize that one year will fly by. And so let's please pay attention to this. It's one year, otherwise you're looking at buying a whole building, which is a completely different animal. Already failed a town meeting once. So to the extent you want to contemplate the option of purchasing the first floor, we really need to weigh in against the alternatives very quickly, including Mr. Stasko and anything else that deserves, I think, a fair shot at going head-to-head with that. Um, and then the, uh, I, I, so, so that's the suggestion. The question I have is, Michelle, when you speak to the building owner, uh, and when you look at the proposal, can you please just be absolutely certain we know if it's one year from the day that we say yes, or if it's one year from the day that we occupy the building? Because that's going to be several months difference, and the calendar's really important. Also, the one year, is it one year, like, do we have 365 days to say yes? Or do we have 365 days to not only say yes, but also execute on the contract? Which is, again, we just really, really need to pay attention to the calendar if in fact that's something that we then want to pursue. Thank you.
Excellent points, Mr. Host, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we just correct you? I think, Brian, you said that it failed a town meeting. One Pleasant Street did not fail a town meeting, it passed by 75%.
Sorry.
Okay. Um, it, and I think, I think in terms of your clarification with the owner, I think it would be worth letting the owner know how important this option is to the town. Um, in terms of the 3.2, for me certainly was a critical consideration. Um, okay, and yes, we can move all of that information over to capital budget on Monday, for Monday. Um, all right, any other questions before we move to the presidential primary? Which, incidentally, I would point out, people, um, aren't aware, there is a presidential election going on. And if we, um, end up voting on something substantial at the fall election, the presidential elections are the highest turnout, 80% in Cohasset. So that means 5,000 people will likely show up at the voting booth, and then we can get a real sense of what Cohasset thinks on town hall.
That'd be something.
I digress. Um, all right, so that will be long after, um, my term is over. So we are at the presidential primary, and.
You've already, you've already voted. You have to sign it, and it's right here.
Okay, this is just some. We have no topics not reasonably anticipated, right, Mr. Senior?
I have one.
Okay. Does anyone like to make a motion to a chair? All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 Thank you all for attending.